All right, we're going to call this meeting to work. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Good evening. Mrs. Bell?
Here.
I missed someone there. Mrs. Albright?
Here.
Sorry, I have to do that. Mr. Jerick?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse? Mr. Scott here. Mr. Strobel appears to be absent. And Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Jimmy?
He's here.
He's here.
We can go through here. Rest assured, we can receive. What's this phone number? It looks like we are going to be dialing in Mr. Strobel. And while we're doing that, I have a couple of announcements to make. My phone just goes off. It's fine. We still have a possibility of a tornado warning tonight. It looks like it's a diminishing possibility, but if we do have to rally, because tornado imminent, audience members are going to follow our security guard, go around the corner in the space in between the music room and the bathrooms. There's no windows there, so that's your rallying point. Board members and administration rallying points back there. Also, no windows. We don't have access to the bathroom, so you guys are better off in that regard. But that was... I just wanted to make that announcement before I read the procedures for public participation. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items can be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will begin when you start to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And this is a committee of the whole, so we don't have a comment section at the beginning because we're not voting on anything today. Okay, so under announcements, we do not have any agenda edits. We also do not have an executive session after this meeting. And it's time for the superintendent's report. Mr. Volker.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm very, very pleased to announce that I have made it a little bit more than one month in the position. And yeah, thank you, thank you. It has been a wonderful month. I've been extremely blessed and supported by amazing people, the board, the administrative team, the teachers, the community. I have gum right now because of a very special community member. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Some of the biggest challenges, I shouldn't say challenges, opportunities that we've been working through as an administrative team is we've come together over the last week really focusing on how do we want to lead? What does that leadership style look like? You know, what does the feel from the school district? How should that feel? How do we involve parents more in that process? And as a team, we've had some really in-depth and great engaging conversations, talking about really how we can take what it is that we're doing now and improve upon that and make it a little bit better. So that's been a lot of the work that we've been doing internally. Of course, we've been doing facility walkthroughs, looking at every square inch of the buildings and the grounds, developing plans and how we can improve both the structural side of the house as well as the curriculum instruction. How can we improve what's happening within each of the classrooms? It's been a very busy month, but I'm extremely energized and excited about the school year that's upcoming. And that's really where we are right now. This upcoming school year, one of the biggest things that we're going to be doing as a school district is partaking in the strategic planning process. And that's going to include every single aspect of the district, from facilities to instruction, to budget, to sports, to community engagement, everything. All stakeholders are going to have a voice at the table. And that's going to be our guiding light for the foreseeable future. So that's not just a one, two, three-year plan. That's a five-plus-year plan on how we're going to address many of the different areas within the organization that we identify as areas that are prime for growth. So through the superintendent's report, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Okay, moving on to our items on the agenda for tonight, under finance. Everything under finance is pretty standard stuff for the beginning of the year. Does anybody have any questions about anything except for number four? Okay, hearing none of that. Mr. Hurley was going to give us a little bit of a background story on the River Rock renewal.
Sure. River Rock is our AEDY program. That's what we send students to on occasion. This policy agreement is a slot that we pre-purchased from them. This year, we're pre-purchasing based on historical data, nine for our secondary students and one for elementary students. Some of those are already taken out by students who are continuing their programming there. Just for the board's purposes, the contract is there. It is still under negotiation. We're still talking with them today. I'm very confident that we'll add new degrees and order additional slots based on my special school.
Okay. Board have any questions for Mr. Hurley or for administration in general? Any public comment on finance? Okay, moving on to whatever's next, programs. Everything under there is the handbook. The noted revisions are all there. A lot of them have to do with cellphone use. We will be approving them like pretty much right before school starts, so if the board hasn't read them and if they have any concerns, you can bring them to administration in the interval. Does anybody have any questions, comments right now? Anything other than cellphone that should be noted? That's what I thought. Any public comments on programs? Okay, moving on to retirements, resignations. It's pretty self-explanatory. Comments, questions, concerns from the board? Public comment? Okay, secretary's correspondence, Mr. Scott. Anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. BCIU report, Mr. Jerick?
BCIU is basically all of the President asks for state.
Okay.
So now there's been the pieces of funding.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Jerick? That reminds me of the other announcement I wanted to make at the beginning of the meeting. In between our last public meeting in June and today, they had to make some repairs to the sound system. And during our committee meetings, we had a lot of feedback from a lot of the mics. I turned a lot of them down. I apologize if you have trouble hearing anybody, but if I turn them up, it's probably going to be problematic. So just, you know, we'll try to speak as... I know I have no problem speaking loud, but you know, but if everybody else could speak up a little bit, I know that I turned your mics down. It wasn't... An attempt to not hear you is an attempt to not get the feedback. All right. BCTC report, Mrs. Thompson?
All right. We met in June 28th. We just went over insurance premiums. They're still serving the education foundation, job openings they're looking for for the school year. The individual school districts are not responsible for transportation, but they still do need to bus drivers for the house to stay here for runs. We talked about the Perkins audit, the BCTC career camp, Danville did send 12 students. And then they had 90 students on their waitlist. It was a pretty popular camp. And the next meeting is August 21st.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Thompson? The Legislative Action Committee, Mr. Strobel, is there anything to report right now? Hello?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay.
I'm driving, it's not going to be hard to read anything.
No, that's all right.
Thank you.
Any other reports from any committees? No? Okay. Public comments on any of the committee reports? Okay, moving on to the next thing. Our monthly enrollment statistics? Any questions that the board had for the administration on any of that? Any public comments on enrollment? Okay, curriculum and instruction? Ms. Albright?
Curriculum and instruction was meant this evening actually prior to this meeting. And we talked about the fact that we are going to kind of get rid of the multiple...
Instructional methodology?
Instructional methodology that we were doing. I was trying to think of what it's called. And going with Schoology for grades two through 12, eliminating the Blackboard Schoology, CSOL, Google Classroom, the whole... CSOL's still for kindergarten and first, but having four of them down to two. We also talked about temporarily pausing the Virtual Academy and having more staff interaction with those students in the Virtual Academy and having a point person to kind of hopefully bring them back to our online learning. We talked about the live streaming and the fact that it is not as conducive to creative teaching. And although it is an option, it will have to be on an individual basis discussed between administration and the family for whatever reason that may be. And that's it?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Albright. Any comments or concerns from the board from Ms. Albright? Just under... Just a reminder here, the next meeting, it's the 25th. Next what?
Next meeting.
Is the 25th of September.
Yeah, because we moved it, yeah.
Right. So it'll be a little bit of a time in between, but that's okay. Any public comment on curriculum and instruction? Extracurricular did not meet today, and I don't believe it met in June, correct? Next meeting will be September 11th. Any public comment on extracurricular? Okay. Facilities and transportation, Mr. Rittenhouse?
Yes, we also want to be just... This may be, this is basically an update, maybe a better update on the situation of River Rock. Talked about the school district developments. We updated, had updated our summer projects, how they progressed along and all our targets to be completed. We talked about the high school fire panel replacement. The system will be done in two phases. Wait until we complete it. Of course, the second phase will be completed in two months. That of course will not interfere with the operations here at the high school. We discussed the bus routing and bringing on stop finder to have... I don't know how to say it. Mr. Brothers, we've priced in the rest administration's base for the bus route scrap. It's on its own. And then finally finished up discussing a needed replacement for the AC at the primary center. For the octo C.
And the dollar amount?
Oh, yeah. $9,640 on this.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rittenhouse on facilities, transportation? Any public comment? Finance. We met last in June of 2023. I don't remember what day it was, like the 6th?
12th.
And the main topic was the budget, which we passed then in the following week with no tax increase. So that's basically what we talked about. The next finance committee meeting is August 21st. Does anybody have any questions for me or for Mr. Lellic? Any public comment on finance? Next is policy, is that right? Did I skip one? Policy, Mr. Scott?
So we had our policy meeting this evening. We just discussed three different policies. It was kind of a quick meeting, supplemental, discipline records, meetings, and our third policy for students experiencing foster care homelessness and other educational issues. Our next meeting will be on September 11th.
Okay. Any questions from the board on policy? Any public comment on policy? Technology. Mr. Strobel's on the phone, but I'll save you the trouble. There was no meeting in June. And the next...
Thank you.
Yeah, the next meeting, the next meeting is August 21st. Do anybody from the board have any questions about finance? Any... About technology, which is not finance? Any public comment on technology? Okay. Moving on to old business, approval of the minutes. Anybody have any questions about the minutes? We'll continue, we'll go on to the TIF discussion. Who's going to start that discussion? Mr. Strobel. Okay, Mr. Strobel, go right ahead.
On the TIF?
Yep.
Yep. Yes, we met Volker, Russ, Jerick, Brian, Subers. We met with the township the other week and basically sat down and said, that's where we're staying up here and figure out what we need to do to make this happen. And basically walked out of there with something that everybody felt positive with. And if we go back in our records, we all kind of agreed that we could present 80% and have zero liability whatsoever. And the township decided that they were going to take 100% of the liability. And then the county was going to pay 70% of the increment towards the overall TIF. And it worked out in everybody's behalf. So between next week, we'll be voting on it moving forward. It's worked out really great. We also were, we also discussed the other things that we talked about there as well.
I know, we're just going to talk about the TIF.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe that was it. It worked out really well. Everybody wants to work together. Great meeting.
Okay, would you be able to just crystallize what he just said? Just...
Go ahead.
No, I just didn't know about a meeting, so I didn't know if there was something there which was him or yourself.
Mr. Jerick, do you want to interject maybe a little bit about this impromptu meeting that kind of popped up?
Well, we kind of had an impasse the last time the township asked me to hear the the charter and all the ideas for that. And, you know, we had a little bit of internal discussion.
Can you... I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you talk a little louder? Sorry.
We had a little bit of an internal there. So we had a little bit of an internal discussion about what we thought might hold this. I went over to the township and just said, well, we'd like to look at our small working to discuss. And so myself, Superintendent Volker, Mr. Strobel, Mr. Subers, met with the township supervising Keith and Tori, who I think is the other one, actually. I think it was actually a couple of folks were there. There was Jeremy from the...
County.
From the county was there. And we basically just kicked around a couple of different strategies. And what we proposed was contributing 80% to the TIF and that the township was going to accept 100% of the liability guarantee. So that's what we presented to them. We presented to the township.
Which was where the... My understanding was that's pretty much where one of the previous offers through the township was and was rescinded at our last meeting? Is that correct? It's pretty close? When the township's solicitor was here?
It was rescinded by the county.
Oh, that was...
It was rescinded by the county.
It was rescinded by the county, that's right.
Yeah, the county had an issue with the difference in what the amounts that were being participation of the increment, increase. And so that was the hangup. It's all along the township was in for this and wanted to move forward, and they were willing to take on the liability. At the last minute, it was the county had changed, you know, felt that the school district should put a larger amount of increment in.
Oh, right.
They were thinking 85 or 90. We floated out there 100, which wasn't really something that would work for anybody. And then so, but prior to that, we all as a group had agreed that if we can get to 80% and with zero liability, that we were getting something, the paydown would be quicker, so we'd be able to see the full benefit of the increment, increase. We'd be able to see that full benefit earlier than 10 years. It might be more like six or seven years depending on, you know, how it goes. And that's really, we kind of went down that path and Jeremy went back to the county. With the township also in our corner, what we were... The township and the school district were together, and so the county decided to step up and this is good for everybody.
So essentially, this is, this discussion was to roll us back to where we thought...
Right, it was originally back to 80% of the...
Right, where we, that we were considering in June. Yeah.
We did, we did make the attempt to try and go to 70 or, you know, 50. It just wasn't going to occur. It just wasn't. The county would have not went for that. But again, we go back to we originally all felt that it would be a good deal. We'd receive the money sooner by paying 80 instead of 40. And there was other information provided at that meeting where there's really not a lot that's out there where people are paying less than that. There were some other things shared, but it was something we could all get in, we could all agree on as a group, the county, the township, and school district.
So I guess the point is that at the next meeting, we might have either resolution documents or a contract document to look at and possibly vote yes or no on with these terms, which were the terms that we thought we were talking about in June, and then they were pulled, they were clawed back. But this is where we are now, where the, if this were to go through, the school district would have no liability for the balance of the note if the project fell through before it was completed.
Correct.
We would be paying 80% of our new taxes toward the note until the whole thing's paid off, and the county is paying 70%? Or is the township?
Yes, of their increment.
Of their increment, again, until the whole thing is paid off? And that the township is taking 100% of the liability?
And just for, just for informational purposes, we did discuss some of the other things like, you know, coming back to the water department, if they would have, we discussed, you know, why wouldn't the builder put some, you know, sign up and take some of the liability? And all these things were not going to happen or ever happen. It was just all that would do is delay the entire process. No need to delay it anymore. There was a lot of people that had a lot of information there. Again, it was impromptu, and I thank you, Russ, for, you know, coming up with that idea to have an informal meeting where we could all just kind of let our hair down and talk about what kind of solutions can be presented where we all feel comfortable.
So I don't know if, do you want to, we can have a discussion about how we all feel about this right now? But because, I mean, to me, and this is just my opinion, you know? My job here is to do what I think is best for the students, for the taxpayers, and for the staff. And I think that there's other folks involved in that group, but I think those are the three things that I think are most important for me. And I think that bringing extra money into the district where, and we're not taking on additional liability, I think that serves all of those people.
Are we going to actually see this in writing before we have to vote on it?
Yes. 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 No, we're not voting on it now. I'm thinking, if, you know, now that's up to the lawyers how long it takes to get to us, but I'm just telling you, that is the intent, that there will be a document sometime soon with these terms that have just been described to us for us to vote up or down on.
So the only thing, I don't like to do this in front of the board, but I, this feels a little underhanded. And that's not aimed at you, it's just that this meeting took place, and I don't think a bunch of us, I know there's four of us right now that had no idea that meeting was taking place. Like to have been a part of that, or certainly a part of it in the future. That's obviously not aimed at you, but it's just like this, I appreciate you guys doing that, but I have to tell you, and you and I got on the unslapped a few meetings.
I know.
We had a little impromptu meeting about something completely different, didn't think it was a big deal, but several of the people that were nappy and were upset with us. So I just feel like there's, how could that happen without us knowing about it? Where are you going to go?
I'm not sure how impromptu a meeting can be if there were 12, 13 people involved. That's not...
But we, we know within ourselves, that's all. I don't mean, I'm not even talking to Julie, I'm just saying generally.
The attorney, yeah.
That's all. And I did attack you hard to hear him, so to your point, hopefully we are going to have that clear up to us before we have to come to a vote.
You know, I will say, you know, some of the board members that live in Amity Township were at, were at a planning commission meeting and were offered the opportunity to have a smaller work session. And that's what they did. And they did, and if it wasn't for the fact that we haven't had too many meetings recently and we just had a superintendent's shift over you, it might have been mentioned a little sooner. And that might be, that might be my fault for not bringing more in.
I understand.
No, I understand.
Because you've got four of us, you can just tell by your faces. And I don't know what we hear, there's five of us that just didn't have a clue.
Yeah, and if, for not bringing it to everybody's attention, yeah. I wasn't there, you know? But I did know it was happening. But I did know it was happening. Yeah.
There is, there is one more, there is one more piece of notes here. We, everybody, the board as itself, we weren't there negotiating on behalf of the board, because we were just, we were just trying to see where we could come up with something that we could bring back to the board. And basically, we went, we ended up landing on where the board as a group voted, as a group, we all voted saying, we would be able to move forward. We all felt comfortable moving forward if we could see each time numbers. So that's where we ended up taking it so that we could get that next step, not a handshake, but you know, something to say, okay, now we all, we all have something we can agree upon, all three entities are in agreement, we need to go back to our board. They went back to their board and they voted it through. It was the very next evening they had a vote on it. The county, I don't know if they voted yet, now we have to take ours to vote. It really wasn't a meeting like, okay, this is where we're going to get this done. You're trying to see where it needs to go, if it was going to happen at all. You know, we're talking about it continuously without any, without any resolve. And so it ended up, what was exciting about it was the fact that we ended up getting it where we see our entire work within agreement before, so that felt pretty good about. Now, next time we go to vote on it, maybe that won't be the case. Maybe everybody won't be the only same way. But that's where we were a month ago. That was the goal.
I guess I want to say...
When he's, he's talking about when... He's talking about when we had the lawyer for the... We had the lawyer for the township here in, I can't remember if it was June or May.
Wow, we never took a vote.
No, we didn't. Because there was the... What we thought was a proposal at that point was pulled back by the county.
Right, so I was just saying we were all in agreement, because then I think they're...
You just said there, I guess a small group was in agreement, but that's a big issue that I already have.
Right. Nobody's saying anybody is, yeah.
I didn't want to be that clear.
Yeah.
I'm just confused, like saying that what we originally agreed to was like, how long, like a long time ago.
And it doesn't even look like that anymore.
Right, so I don't think that...
I'll have a presentation in the future if you didn't know.
Right, like I just don't think that's a... I don't think it's like what we agreed on a year, at least a certain year, you know?
Well, that's why I was presenting my view of the situation right now, you know?
The view has been totally different. We've received different feedback from the public and all sorts of new information that we have to take into account differently.
So we're going to have a meeting or something about that?
A real... Yeah, a voting meeting. Yeah. And I don't know what form it'll take, if it'll be a resolution from the board, or if it'll be like an actual contract ready to sign, I don't know. So, and I don't know if it'll be the end of the... I want it to be the end of August, but if it isn't, you know, that's, you know, that's up to us. That's up to the lawyers, I guess.
But our last meeting, I don't know if you were in the audience, but that last meeting did not go well with the township.
And I think that's...
That was an attempt... This was an attempt for us to reset that relationship.
Correct.
And that was the problem. It was that small meeting.
And that...
That small meeting was just an attempt to reset what happened with the lawyers. So what we had was like 70 voices going on. We felt that a small working group could come to a framework that we present the full board.
How was that much different in terms of where you already were? I don't feel it was much different.
It was more about the liability issue. That was there happening.
But we said you didn't want the guarantee.
In the last meeting, I remember I brought up that option. And we all decided we weren't going to vote that night.
Right.
Was that option was already brought up. I wasn't involved in any of this meeting, I'll just tell you, but that 100%, like, no liability was brought up.
I feel like we already...
But they weren't going to take that, was it? No liability was part of it. We're still going to 100%. The township is now going to accept all liability. The hang-up is that the district didn't want to accept any liability. Nobody here wanted to.
Right, right.
Again, it was just an attempt for a small working group to have a discussion, to bring back to their respective boards, so they could talk.
I think...
Okay, that's not how we're having presented it, I don't think.
We weren't told about it, that it wasn't going to happen.
Yes.
Like, I was on the TIF committee, I wasn't even told about it.
Even... Right, you're on the TIF committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're just... Yeah, I think it's just that simple. Just like we were told you guys are meeting, great, you know? That's great, you have your conversation. We just, we didn't know about this. And listen, I know there's some good things that have come from this type of arrangement. We did the power plant.
Yeah.
We were not part of that, but the previous boards, that's done well for, I believe...
Yeah, I agree.
The district. So, yeah, that was my only thought. I didn't know anything about it.
Thank you.
It's just that simple. I get it, where we didn't vote.
You just said thank you, fair point.
What was that, you shut up?
I thought that's what I meant, too, at first.
Thank you. Shut up.
Yeah. All right, do we have any other discussion among the board on that, on the TIF, before I put it out to the public? Any public comment on the TIF? Or on the minutes?
Good evening, how are you? Tom Flatley with American Land Development. I actually had no intentions of speaking, but I wanted to...
Mic check, mic check.
It's on on my end. Yeah, you got... You good? I don't know.
Check, check.
Is there...
I don't think it's on. It's moved up, but it's not...
Okay. Yeah, there you go. You're good.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, Tom Flatley with American Land Development. So Jeremy Zabrowski actually offered to attend tonight and was not given any direction to be here. So my understanding that Jeremy had a conversation was that from these informal, non-obligatory meetings, was that at least tonight there would be a temperature taken, so that we can move forward with preparing the TIF plan. The only reason I bring this up is that the only thing that is binding is the signing of the actual TIF agreement, which is sent between the attorneys, and all of that is hammered out. That's a process, though, right? To get all of that finalized. And to this point, you know, prior a year ago, we had a commitment from the board to proceed. Obviously, that has changed, totally understandable. But sitting here tonight, Jeremy was expecting there to be a conversation from the board to proceed based on the 80% increment, non-binding, but enough direction that it makes sense to spend the time and money to proceed with the attorneys to get the TIF agreement in place, for you to then formally agree on review and such. So there's a step in between here that we're kind of missing if we don't have an action taken tonight and/or direction provided. So I just wanted to speak to that.
I don't see anything in front of me, like, I don't see a contract in front of me that a proposal or something.
Saying they don't want to do it until they feel, see how we're feeling.
So...
You kind of have to give them the...
Is it an 80%? I thought that's what we had in front of us last time.
They took it away. They took that away.
The 80%?
Uh-huh. At the last meeting, in June, because we were still... We still had the sticking point over the liability.
Liability.
I think our internal issue is that we didn't know this meeting took place. I'm just speaking for myself. And it's all... Like to have been a part of it, or at least... I mean, we just found out this meeting took place, that none of us even knew. And she's actually on the TIF committee.
I can't stand you.
I know. It's not really you as much, I think it's more internal.
I guess where I stand here, though, is just looking at it, I think... I mean, you can imagine tying the township to the county, to the school district, is quite a task to get everybody involved and have these conversations. Jeremy's been leading the way in these conversations to put it all together, offered to be here tonight, wasn't asked to attend. So it's not a function of he wasn't willing to, he would have been here in a heartbeat.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that that would have been an issue.
No, no, I'm just saying, it's just if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're not going to get to the finish line. And we're at the point where I think that there's been a lot of give and take with all of the involvement of every committee and taxing body here. We're at the point where we just need some direction so that we can get this thing finalized. And that's where... I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware, if we don't make an action tonight, not an action, if we don't get some sort of conversation finalized tonight, we're now talking two, three, four, five more months down the road, which is, it's an issue. It's an issue for everybody involved.
So why not the end of August is not acceptable?
Well, when's the next meeting?
At the end of August.
End of August. But it's going to take two months to have the attorneys prepare the paperwork for the TIF again. Remember, if there's a long process for once we get the green light, theoretical green light from the board to prepare the TIF package, it's like 100 pages of information that is finalized and reviewed. So I just ask that you would consider at least, you know, looking at where you've landed with this committee?
I was asked if I would schedule a special voting meeting today. I didn't feel comfortable doing that, because I knew some of this would be new information for everybody. We don't tend to even do like a show of hands if it's not a voting meeting. Like I said, I guess we could draft... We could draft a resolution and then vote on it in two weeks. You know, I mean, that's...
I don't know if a vote is needed. I think what Jeremy was expecting tonight was a favorable recommendation to prepare the TIF plan. That's it. There's no... This is a non-binding commitment. It's just that without... And we did this before, so I understand that it can change. Hopefully it won't, but if we can at least get, you know, an agreeable vote or statement that says, hey, you know what? We're generally in agreement with this concept. Let's move forward with the TIF plan, then I can have our attorneys, and Jeremy will have his attorneys, put all this stuff together into this massive TIF plan, which then can be reviewed by Brian Subers, which, you know how...
I get your point, and so your three minutes are up. Your three minutes are up, so let me just put this out to the board. We're in kind of uncharted waters as far as what's being asked. I don't have a problem saying that with... Within the confines of the four corners of what's been described to me as what the deal would consist of, I would be in favor of voting to approve the TIF. I don't know...
The public is not in favor of this. Let the developer pay for it. Don't make the students a damn fool pay for it. Let the developer. He's the one who actually has to be making the millions of dollars. He can install it.
I appreciate that you...
You're doing this to silence me and the public.
I would like you to just wait until... You'll get your chance to speak in just a minute, so just give me a minute.
Then we're not even voting.
No, we're not.
Katie, there's no vote.
No, we're not.
I'm not voting for this right now.
No, so what I was going to say is I don't know if there are five people up here who would be willing to say I am in favor of something in future. I mean, go ahead. And I heard a second person say that. What?
I'm in favor.
And what'd you say, Beth?
I say no.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I figured, yeah.
Well, you gotta get everybody, get them an answer.
I'm still trying to understand. So we went from 20% of future taxes, then we went to like, what, 60% of future taxes, and now we're at 80% of future taxes with no guarantee.
That's what happened.
Correct.
Okay, but that was a problem at the last meeting, wasn't it?
With the county.
But I think we were...
And the bank.
I think we had the liability at the last meeting.
We still have liability.
We have liability to that.
I threw it on the table and it stayed away and it's...
Right, exactly.
I can't keep up with it.
I know, right?
Well, I think you spared it.
And the county moved up to 70%. The county wasn't at 70%.
No, 70% of their share. Right? Is that not what I understood from you?
And if you feel you don't have enough information to say what you're interested, that's fine. Just, that's fine.
I, yeah, I feel like I don't have enough information.
Okay. Mr. Rittenhouse? Okay. Mr. Jerrick?
So I think we should be having a discussion about whether that's...
That's what I... That's what I tried to start that discussion, and everybody got quiet. So...
So I don't think anyone's sitting here... I can't speak, I'll speak for myself. I'm willing to discuss it, but there's no vote right now.
Correct.
You're just talking about this.
You can go ahead and sit.
I have asked one, I still want the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Thompson, if there's whatever information you may need, please let Ms. Alton know, and then we can provide. That's all. I mean, Jeremy is totally available. He's a neutral party, he's part of the county. So whatever additional information you may need, we can provide. That's all. It's totally available.
I think after the last meeting with the attorney, the way he spoke to us, and then this meeting, that's a place, like, I think there's some... Something that's making me question it now.
Truth.
Absolutely.
And that attorney there was...
Yeah, he really... He didn't do you any favors.
Yeah.
He didn't do you any favors.
And if he'd have tried to go say, you have so many emotions up here right now because some others weren't involved in that meeting, or you knew about that meeting, then it would probably have been worth it.
No, and once again, I wasn't asking for a formal vote at all. It's just a function of trying to move things forward. Once again, you know, Mr. Boland was from the township, not representing myself or Jeremy.
We're here again.
No, no, I don't think I was going to say...
So if I could ask you to have a seat now? So as, you know, as we were saying, like, when we were at the... When we were at the last meeting, the lawyer was here, and I think that was all a lot of our concerns about that, about what was happening, what came from the comments that came from the lawyer. That was contradictory to what the township was saying and sometimes what the county was saying, and it just muddied the waters. That was what Mr. Jerrick and Mr. Strobel were trying to remedy by having a little bit more direct conversation about, well, what if I bring this back to my board? You know?
So is there no way we can talk about this?
I tried, you know? I mean, I can't make people talk.
I feel like we don't have as much facts in front of us. I mean, honestly, it was hard to hear them.
Well, the facts are what the change, what is on the table as a possibility would be for the TIF to go forward with us paying 80% of our new taxes to pay off the note for however long that takes.
How old is that?
And I believe... Yeah, I believe that's right.
Eight, seven years.
Seven years, yeah. And the county would pay 70% of...
They came up on their number. Their number was 70 to begin with.
And that the township would take all liability on the note in case the project fails.
So this whole thing, okay, let's just... I'll say it. If this whole thing goes south, like, in two years, whatever, we've invested money from the school...
We haven't invested any money.
No, we haven't.
No investment.
80% of additional, of future revenue.
Right.
We're not in the hunt for the guarantee.
So we're giving up 80% of our future taxes for the next seven years.
Yeah, so like, so say the taxes on the... Say the taxes on the land are $10,000.
That's what they're hoping if it goes well.
Say the taxes... Say the taxes on the land is $10,000 right now to us. We will continue to get $10,000. If there is an additional $20,000 due to, you know... If there's an additional $10,000 due to increase in land value because of homes being built, we would get $12,000, and $8,000 would go to the bank. Because we still get the original $10,000, we get to keep that. So every year that the project continues to move forward, as long as it moves forward, every single year, we get more money in taxes, until the note's paid off, and then we get 100%.
Again, this is similar to what happened in Berksburg.
We're a net...
Right, we worked for the power plant, we gave them five years.
That was a different... It was a different incentive program, but it was... That was a different, it was a different incentive program, but it was, it, yes, it was, but it was different.
We gave up a certain, we gave up no tax. I guess we didn't take taxes out of that group.
We didn't take taxes, that one, we didn't get any taxes from that for five years because I think that was a Keystone Opportunity Zone. Yeah, so it's a different type of vehicle.
Right, so just for the, whatever. If we said, if we all said yes to this right now, he throws up all the papers, it doesn't, there's no guarantee this thing is going to go through.
Right, right.
So he, I mean, I get his point, gentleman's point.
All it does is give them the go-ahead to put the paperwork together for us.
And get more angry.
That's it.
There's no.
And he, keep in mind, look, all it.
The thing here was, the lawyer was here last time, he wanted us to accept liability, and that's why, that's why we went and had a small conversation with those guys, to try and see where we could work that out. And the township agreed to accept 100% of liability.
It wasn't that attorney representing Amity?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
My township. Great crowd.
Right, so that's, and, but that's, but nobody was going to agree to that deal.
No.
So what we did, we're trying to avoid, and again, there was no, like, cheap business going on here. It was simply a smaller working group, so we didn't have 50 voices all trying to have a conversation. If we had six people talking, we could come up with a framework that we could go back to our respective boards and present.
And talk about one, one possibility, yes or no, and not, and not everybody's, oh, but how about if we do this?
Exactly, and you're the president.
I'm just, maybe this, this is like.
But, like, we have a TIF committee.
Well, I'm right.
We didn't use it.
What says right?
I'm just making that point.
Right.
Yeah, that is true.
What do you say?
You're not due.
I gotta do you.
Ms. Bell, what do you say?
I'm saying we have a TIF committee.
We have a TIF committee.
And she wasn't on it.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with that. I don't know why that wouldn't happen.
Backdoor dealing.
Well, I think, I think if we had a heads-up before we walked into this meeting, I mean, that's not quote-unquote legal, but I mean, I feel like we changed the whole conversation here. I mean, just even half a page of bullet points that, you know, this is what it is, even if you hand it to other.
Like email.
Yeah, email or something. That's all. And again, I mean, this is anybody in general. I just feel like.
You know, any meeting in the summer, I'm not going to attend, I just want to know about it.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's fair, that's fair. And.
Right, we know you're not.
And I, and I'm the one that fell down in that regard, because, you know, no, yeah, it's like, I know you're not.
It's not you.
But, but, but Russ, but Russ and Kevin didn't do anything wrong, you know, because, yeah, so.
I think they didn't do anything wrong. I just felt like we just said no, that's all. I think that would have been, there's no, Kevin, we don't get along.
Finger pointing.
We're communicating right now.
Yeah.
But I feel like we broke down the communication there. That's all. Somehow, and again, there's five of us right here that are at least, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm a little amped up on this, but I, I just felt like we should have known before. And, and after that last experience, that was really terrible, that last meeting. I can't say that enough. It was just, we got really spoken down to. And, and then, and then, and I know Shane's out there, and other parents out there, but we were, we were being spoken down to, and, and we have to report back to the parents, like, and I'm a parent. Like, it was just, we didn't end that meeting, right?
No.
That's all.
That's right.
That's my only point. I'm not, I'm not saying, if we sit here and go, it doesn't sound like a bad deal, we could, they could throw the papers, but, and Shane, before you say something, still, we could easily say no to this thing.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm saying is.
Yeah, that's true.
If we have, maybe a couple, am I incorrect in saying this, like, a couple bullet points people.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
Sit here at the next meeting and go, yeah, let's, let's move ahead with it. That doesn't mean we're approving it, but we're moving ahead with it. But to his point, he doesn't want to wait another five months, which I, I don't know why it has to be that. All right, I'll.
Thank you, you need six months of passport.
I think it'd be possible for us to vote on an internal resolution next time with the, with the, with the four corners of the deal, and give, present that without.
If that's what the board wants to do, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we could do, we can vote yes or no on something in two weeks. Not, not, again, not on a contract because it won't be drawn up yet.
I'm just saying.
Let's move forward with getting some paperwork. That's, and again, that doesn't mean we vote yes, that means we vote yet up or down.
Well, that's, that's, I would agree with that.
To vote on your intent.
Yeah. Yeah, because it doesn't, I don't feel like there's consensus here right now, and some people, you know, you know, might have some further questions.
Yep.
Well, I just, I just want to know more.
I understand.
More things.
Anything from the board for the good of the cause before we move on to public comment? Public comment?
I'm gonna start talking.
No, I.
Trying to short me out of time.
Well, now you're.
I think what Mr. Subers did was par. It was a snake move to plan a meeting without public consent, without the public knowing, and I, for the life of me, there's so many things that are wrong with this project, and Mr. Struber.
Strubel.
Strubel. Okay, sorry, I'm really upset right now.
It's okay.
Uh, screwed this board and screwed the public by having this meeting. Okay?
Shane, we have.
Right.
Kevin, you're right, right. Don't worry about that, don't worry about the time. You'll be able to talk, but I'm just saying, I think what we feel like.
He has a word up.
The last gentleman actually spoke in to red, so that's all I'm saying.
No.
But, okay.
Stop messing with my timer, let him talk.
No, but I'm saying, I think what we're upset about, I can speak for me, all I can say is I can't remember what I mean.
Public comment, public comment.
Go ahead, I'm very much.
Mr. Scott, go ahead.
If, if you're gonna be mad at anyone, you can be mad at me.
No, no.
No, I'm serious. Address your, address your comments to me.
Okay, don't sit there and take.
We did her right.
Nothing's for Struber.
No.
It is not you, Julia, and you're really, and they're gonna vote you out.
No.
Okay? I know it was Mr. Strubel. Okay? She was not involved. She should have been told about it at least. This is a snake move. This is backdoor dealings. You have the board supervisor at Amity Township is the father-in-law of Mr. Flatley, okay? Mr. Flatley's family owns the property, okay? They're in a development. I just printed out where they just gifted the, the family a $976,000 recreational fee. They don't have to pay. So right there, they're saving a million dollars. On the development, the developer already posted, this is gonna be a $98 million project, where they already bought 280 EDU's, and $4,000 a piece is $1.1 million. Did they tell you guys that? They already collect sewer on this, okay? They have millions of dollars invested in this. You guys don't have to give them one penny. You're, you're doing a $3.5 million loss. It's not gains down the future. This, this development's going in. It's gonna go in, it's not gonna get stopped. They got a $1 million gift for recreational fee that's gonna screw the township of Amity people from being able to use that recreational somewhere, okay? They got that gift. Now they want a $3.5 million gift for you. Of course, they're gonna take 100% liability. They're gonna take 100% liability because it's gonna be on their township citizens, okay? They're gonna be gaining millions of dollars. What Mr. Strubel has done has put 100% unfaith and untrust in this whole board if you guys go through this. That meeting should have never happened. He's already asking for a vote next meeting. There should be more discussion. Why not give 40%? Why not give 20%? Why does it have to be 80% in seven years? My mortgage was for 30 years. Do a 30-year mortgage. Why do you want to give up $350,000 to $500,000 a year that you guys could use right away for a gift? It is a gift because they're, they're building it. They're not gonna walk away from this. They're, they're gonna be making $10 million on this project. You guys, I think it's insane that you're gonna pay for sewer and water for a development. It's not gonna check that that was Amity Township's duty. They, they decided that land 20 years ago, they had 20 years to build it, and they sat. Now you have the supervisor and the planning commission coming up with this idea, hey, we'll have the school district pay for it. We'll give us $3.5 million. They already collected $1.1 million in EDU's, okay? They already got a million. If I was any of you guys in, in Amity Township, you better start getting all over there, calling and screaming and complaining. What they're doing, they're lining their pockets at the risk of the tash pants. And you as the older, you just started, and they're putting you on the spot to go through this.
Look, Shane, you just, it just turned red.
I, that is for him.
It hasn't, it hasn't been built, it hasn't been built in 20 years, but all of a sudden now, we know for sure it's gonna be built, and 100% of nothing's nothing.
You're a liar and a snake.
Shane.
Shane. I don't know what his connection is with this development, but he is 100% wrong.
My connection, that's, that's uncalled for, Shane. There's no connection. It's, the school district gets the largest.
You know what, I want to build a $10 million house, you guys give me a tax break for 10 years, okay? Why don't you give all these people that are building a new house.
We gave the power company a fight for no tax break in Berksboro.
I.
It would be down the road.
I do appreciate your comments. I appreciate, I appreciate that, your passion for this issue, but I, you know, I know you're better, you're better than the name-calling, and I, and I just wish you wouldn't do that, so. So, on, on, what we got? On, on the TIF? Oh, yeah, come on up.
I can speak later, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's different topics.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, this is just more so on what you guys spoke to about impromptu meetings. I'm aware of the former superintendent having impromptu meetings with members of this board where I was slandered and defamed.
There's something about the TIF.
And I know this because I have had one of the board members sitting here at this table come up to me and tell me outside of the meeting, as superintendent Cooper was standing there, and said, if superintendent Cooper walks out, I have to walk away from you. I explained to her what was going on, and she said, so that is why the superintendent told us that we are not allowed to talk to you and that you are dangerous.
Okay, this is not, this is, what you're talking about is not the TIF?
Excuse me, excuse me.
What you're talking about is not.
What I'm talking about is everything that is going behind the scenes. All these, all these impromptu meetings that you do not decide to include other people in, that's what I'm referring to. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no decisions made. There's zero decisions made.
Okay. Oh, another one? Okay, go ahead.
And I'm gonna come up, I'm not gonna call any of your names during the conference. Thank you. But I, I, as a member of the community and of the public, I do want to talk about the fact that there was impromptu meetings. I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. I totally understand that you might want to get a small group of people together and discuss something, whatever. I think what I see just sitting in the audience, my problem with that is, why after that didn't happen, because you said that you were aware of it, because you said you were aware of it, and you knew it might come up, you didn't want to hold a vote, like, I guess I don't understand why you wouldn't have sent a memo around to the team and said, hey, this meeting happened, and kind of explained that it happened. It's very, to me, it's very weird that half of the board would have heard that that happened, like, right now at this moment, when clearly there was someone else in the audience that's thinking that there was gonna be some type of potential vote or agreement or something like that, when half the people knew that it happened, you as the president knew that it happened, and then everybody else is just finding out about it today. So, so that's all. I'm not judging, I'm not blaming, but I'm saying that I definitely do not think that something like that was handled. I think that's why people get upset, because it does appear to make it look sneaky, if it wasn't meant to be. It does definitely give some people that.
And if, if, this does open the opportunity for me to say something that, you know, there's, there are issues that, thank you very much for your comments. There, there are issues sometimes, especially when I, I know there's strong feelings on both sides, where we as a board, we can't get on a group email and start talking about, like, how we want to vote or things like that. We can't do that in an email because it's not public, right? So, so sometimes, this is, like, this is our, this is our discussion time. So, we were gonna have a discussion about the TIF, it was on the agenda, and our, our two board members who had that discussion with people from Amity and with the county were giving a, were giving a report to the board, you know, and sometimes I make a decision to send an email out to everybody and say, hey, this happened, and so I'm just letting you know, and then we're gonna talk about it at the board meeting. And sometimes I let it happen in the open meeting because that falls more within the confines of what's allowed by the sunshine law, and so that's, that process makes it a little messier. But, but I feel like legally, we're in a better place and we're not, we're having, everybody's finding out at the same time. It's not like there was, everybody was told in whispers behind closed doors, this is what happened. And, and so, so that was a decision that I made to let it wait until we were in open forum. I knew this was a situation where we had had a lot of very spirited and difficult conversations. So I didn't want to be in a situation where we had a long, drawn-out discussion over email that really should be happening in public. So that was, that was a decision that I made that might have been the wrong decision, and I'll think about that. I'll keep that in mind the next time something like this comes up.
Question mark, Paul, Park Street, Berksboro. So are you going to give the community an opportunity to weigh in on this? Are you gonna have more backdoor deals and meetings? Because Julia, you just said that you were the only one that you knew, but you did not disclose to the rest of the board members. Because on, those if it was equal third, when I had said that not all board members were given the same information, this is my case in point. So I hope, like you had asked, to get this in writing and have the community weigh in on what's going on here, because this does seem very shady. Thank you.
Ms. Markle, there was no, I'm, I'm probably the angriest person on the board right now about this, but no deal was done. I mean, there wasn't a deal, there wasn't a deal done. I just said that that's.
She wasn't even invited to a lecture.
So we all, we agree with that. I think this guy's a little messy, and he's completely fired up, and I think it is a little messy. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not backing down on one of the iota of this thing. But, but, but it's like, at the same time, I know the two that are there that, it just was like, I think we would have all been appreciative.
There are sunshine laws.
There are.
Yeah, but we guys.
And we did follow them because otherwise there would have been a quarrel.
Can we talk about this one point, anything of a call?
We can't do that, because that's a quarrel. No, it is, it actually is a huge, huge problem. In fact, I've asked, oh, God, why am I so loud? I've asked to speak to Julia, I don't know, six months ago about something else, and she was like, oh, we gotta be really careful. She's very good at knowing which, which law we're, like, not allowed to talk about. So I actually get that, but like I said, I, I just don't like things sprung on me, like, like that I had no idea about.
I think, I think that's always.
It didn't, I don't think there was anything shady going on. It just felt like I should have, no.
Maybe it felt a little shady, but, but no decision was made.
No.
And frankly, you've got five of us right here right now that are, like, you know, would not even sign off on this thing right this second.
Can you explain what changed from to, because like you guys talking back, because at one point, like you said, it's 80%, and it's 20%, you're like, no, no, do you?
The hangup was, the hangup was the, the liability. The, the, there were, there were discussions about, like, yes, we can come to a deal with these numbers, but the, but we want the school district to share in the liability, meaning that if, if the debt deal tanked or didn't, wasn't completed, we would still be on the hook for the remainder of the loan to pay it back.
I think they wanted us to take the majority because we're a large.
We need some of it.
That was, that was, and we, and.
We can't.
We can't, we can't do that. That's like, we can't take on that liability, because that's, that is money that would be coming out of our budget to pay a debt for something that does not benefit the students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone.
I miss you.
Me too. I go to meetings, you know that, and I pay attention, and I map all the lot, but I pay attention. And everyone said this backdoor meeting, but I remember at one of the meetings that someone was trying to get people together, a small group together. I remember someone saying that. Whether everyone paid attention or not, that was one of the options, that they wanted to get someone together, and that was after that whole debacle that happened, whatever meeting where, where things have, this TIF thing has gone from here to here to here to here to here. Seriously, and I don't see it getting any better. From when the lawyer came in and then this dude, Shane is the only one, and he left the handle a little bit, and you're like, I'm just scared, well, I get it, name-calling or whatever. He knows a lot of stuff, and we have all these people coming up here telling you all who have other jobs, you know what I mean, you don't focus on whatever this is, you just gotta take the word for certain people, or yourselves, or other members of the board, whatever information you do, whatever digging you do, or whatever information you get, you can only bring that at the board. They don't give you that, you can't bring it to the board. This Shane, you know, he's doing his homework. You know what we call him? Tifanom. That's what we call him, because he does his research. I'm not kidding. He's giving you guys information, and you listen to other people tell you, just don't forget here. And it's just getting shadier and shadier and shadier how people say it. I'm so proud of all you board members up here today, okay? I'm dead serious. There was a point where I didn't have any respect, I respect all of you up here for making your decision, okay? You guys are a huge. You guys did a huge, smart decision. Shane's like, "Tell me, make these guys pay it." One of my things that always blow up, that I didn't like, and I hear, "Oh, it's taxed this, it's taxed that." That something that would benefit the school besides, I get taxes, but kids coming here benefits the school more, you know what I mean? Children coming here. Not building another nursing home, okay, for elderly people, which are all over the place. You understand what I'm saying? Everyone knows there's a nursing home.
I agree with that.
You understand? They should be building, if they said we're building homes and kids are gonna go there, I can see where it'd be leaning more towards something to vote, something beneficial for the school. But these tax, get taxes, a little here, a little there. I don't think, whether you revolve that student, you don't follow, but I think at this point they're just pushing, pushing, pushing agenda. And after what, what Shane said, I'm, I'm almost made up my mind, I'm like, "Oh, make a decision." But my thing is, is he wants to hear you say, "Push the, just tell us you're gonna go through it." But that doesn't mean you're gonna vote on it. So you come back like, "Oh, sorry, we don't vote on it." What's he gonna do? Gonna come up here and cry about it, saying, "Oh, you all gave me your word. You said you were gonna do-" I'm just saying how I like it to me.
I agree with that. I agree with that. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Yep, sounds good.
So, there's a lot of, I feel like emotions. I'm just gonna bring some of this though, just because I feel like losing is just about your grace.
Can you stop by?
There's a lot of emotion around what has happened. I was here for the junior meeting. I appreciate everyone taking time to learn this road. I didn't think it could, I always feel like the devil is in the details where it's being watched. And that's something to just, to just be, I'm not saying there's ill intent, but just know that there is time and there is grace. And it's also grace to reach out, but everyone's perfect. There was good intentions behind it, I think, their meetings. However, we have such experience in the community of backdoor meetings that it's kinda hard for us to discern. And I think that there's something to speak with you. I also think good intentions, like, you know, there always has been by good intentions. There may have been good intentions behind it, but let's use wisdom, let's use, let's be wise when it comes to teamwork regarding this. We are, we are talking about a lot of money and that impacts Amity. I will be Amity. I will be the ultimate person in my community based on this decision. I don't believe this, this should really be involved in this. It's my personal opinion. I think that should be involved, that should be the builders and the township. Do you have that conversation? Believe me, and I would be the whole of the township, but not you guys necessarily. However, what I'm saying is, keep a level head, keep a level head with everything, question everything. And no, just question, question. You have, you know, if it do make you confused, ask the questions. I really feel like you have to give yourself that grace. And yeah, I know the meetings, I just don't think there are, there was an ounce behind it. Like, I really don't, I don't think there was. I think it was just, there was an intention behind it. I just wanted to share that, just to be wise in this little thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckelman. Anyone else wanna talk about new business, or old business, before we move on to new business? Thank you.
I was up, so my line responded to Shane's comments.
At the end.
You can come, you can comment at the end.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, new business. I have one thing that I have to let the board know. I just found out about this at the beginning of the meeting. We are, we are, we have a representative that serves as our representative from the BCIU board, and it's Mr. Jerrick, and his term is up. He would be interested in running for the next three years. But if someone else would like to, also was, was also interested in doing it, let me know. If I don't hear from anybody at the next meeting, we will have a motion on the agenda to appoint, to appoint Mr. Jerrick until 2026, June 30. So, so that was a-
A lot of this is Jerrick.
Well, I know. I know, he's up for it. So that was, that was what I had to say under new business. Yeah, your turn.
My turn, Hope. I don't think the timing of my comments are wonderful. But maybe at, at the same time, it's, it's just kind of what we all need to just get out in the open. What I'm seeing here, obviously, again, under one month, that's, that's been, been what I've seen so far. I've seen a lot of really wonderful things. Even tonight, I'm seeing beautiful things. And I'm also seeing things that, that cause me a lot of concern. So, I, I can tell you based on my experience, we really struggled to get community members out at, at, at board meetings, whether it's committing the whole meeting or whatever, that it was really hard for us to engage with our community. So, one of the most beautiful things that I see here is that we have a community that cares, right? And what I'm hearing from every single person that, that has spoken tonight and just what I see in my conversations with everybody, we have a lot of people that truly care. The concerning part that I'm seeing is we don't have enough trust with one another. And, and as I was sitting in the audience in the months leading up to my appointment, that was one of the biggest areas of concern for me coming in. I've had a wonderful opportunity last week to work with our administrative team. And one of the, the topics we were talking about was how you can't surge trust, simply meaning that you can't just go up to somebody and say, "Hey, trust me." You know, it, it doesn't work that way. And there has been broken trust, based on what I'm seeing with the community, the board, administration, whatever that, that is. And, and the problem, once trust is broken, it takes an incredibly long amount of time to rebuild that trust. What I hope that you start to see as you're coming to board meetings, as you're interacting with the district, is a little bit of a slightly different feel. I am not one to speak ill of anybody else, certainly not those that have come before me, but I can tell you that my perspective and my approach with, with almost all things with the district, especially at the board level, is a little different than my predecessor. And that is not speaking ill. I believe everyone does the best job that they can while they're here. And I will do that. I will do my absolute best job without being ambiguous about it. I believe in heavy communication, transparency, and I don't always believe that silence is the best approach to things. Because what I have found, again, especially while I'm here, is that in moments of silence, that void gets filled by other thoughts, ideas, conceptions, often misconceptions about what's occurring and what is truly happening behind the scenes, right? I can tell the community, I have at this point had an opportunity to meet with almost every single board member one-on-one. And it is a thankless position everybody is in. It is something that you volunteer for, and they are all good people, all with very differing thoughts, which is really what I think is the strength and the bedrock of our school district and our community. You never wanna be in a situation where everybody has the same thought process and approach. So that challenging of thoughts and ideas, I view as a very, very beneficial thing for our school district. But with differing thoughts and opinions, has to come with a respect for others' views and their thoughts. I can bear it to you, just by sitting here, and again, the whole TIP concept is, I'll be honest, new to me, and I've had conversations, and I attended that meeting. There, there's no ill intent with what occurred, but what everybody has to understand is there is no way, zero chance that everybody is going to look at this TIP the same way and come to an agreement that that's the right path forward. It's not gonna happen. There will be a split vote. And what we need to do as a community, what we need to do to model for our students is show that when we have differing viewpoints, we can come to a mutual understanding, a disagreement, but a respectful disagreement on how we're gonna proceed, without going down a negative path of thinking that people are doing evil things or calling names. Like, that's, we're as a community better than that. I am so incredibly proud to be back home again. This is the place where I fell in love with the community and I fell in love with education. It's only going to move forward and advance if we can find a way to work together. And I feel very parenty right now, and I don't need to come across very parent. I feel like this is a speech I just gave to my two girls. That's not what I'm trying to do. But, but I do believe that we have to address that elephant in the room and recognize that different thoughts doesn't mean good at hand. It's just differing thoughts. The reason I'm actually talking has nothing to do with the TIP. It's, it's to address something else that has gone on and impacted our community in a very big way, a very public way. And, you know, just being honest, and I don't wanna go into details of it, but I'm talking about the youngs. We have a family that has gone through the worst tragedy that one can imagine. And what has happened since that day is not the path that we wanna continue moving down. The approach with silence, I don't agree with it. I believe in, in transparency about that, so much so that I'm gonna talk a little bit about it now. And I'm not going to divulge details, but I think it's important to know that the school district is supportive of the young family. One of my priorities upon starting here was to stop out and visit them and have an open, honest, candid conversation to figure out how as a school district and a family within our school district, we can find a way once again to rebuild some bridges that have been, I, I dare say, just completely destroyed. That, once again, like you can't surge trust, is going to take time. And I, I've said publicly to, to them, in front of the other, I'm always gonna be open, honest, and transparent with you. It's not going to be that you'll like everything that I have to say all the time. Sometimes we'll disagree on things. But that's what I believe is best, is the school district to support one another. So, I completely did not follow any of my notes of what I wanted to say. But I, I am saying publicly that we as a school district, we want to support our families, we want to support our community, and we will do so to the best of our ability. There are instances where there are not all of the facts out there. And again, in the absence of facts, there have been misconceptions that have filled that, that void. We are currently in the process of undergoing an investigation, which I believe is probably the best thing that could possibly happen right now. So, again, another part of the leadership training that we were going through was like, when in doubt, investigate. That's, that's a bit of a mantra that, that went through about doing the right thing, really is what it's about. And that's why I'm actually excited about this investigation, because we now have a sergeant that the family trusts, I believe, doing work to earn their trust. So we have an administrator within the organization that we can trust. And our goal is to finally get to closure on a lot of questions. So, without going into any more detail about that, I thought that was extremely important to address publicly because we need to be working together, hand in hand, community and school district. I have no problem with, with fire and, you know, feelings, but we wanna make sure that we stay respectful of one another. And at the end, when the dust has settled, find a way to move forward together. I'm gonna stop talking.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Anybody from the board have anything to say before we let public comment for under new business happen?
I appreciate your insight.
Me too.
And I, I agree too. We were quiet a lot of times. We didn't really say maybe what we wanted to say, but then, I'll say for myself, I mean, I have kids and I say so. And I cannot tell you how hard I, you know, I imagine we went through the youngs. We were all kind of quiet up here. So for that, I'm sorry.
Sweetie, thank you for giving that voice to that you're listening to that.
Okay. Anybody have any comments under new business? And then we'll have one more comment section for just anything. Okay, see, none. Do we have any, any general comments from the, from the public? Okay?
I don't have a comment. Fit in three minutes. I'll give my best.
Thanks.
In late October, early November, Michelle was hand-delivering letters to Dr. Cooper as he would no longer respond to her emails. This was taking place prior to any official response from the school as to questions we had. Michelle then gets a notification through Google that somebody is attempting to access our photos. Michelle then spoke with Brian Subers, who admitted to attempting to open a photo of Roman's she had sent to his favorite teacher via the teacher's school email account. Brian Subers is a solicitor of Daniel Boone School District, simply through teachers' emails to determine who we were having any correspondence with and of what nature, again, prior to any response from the school regarding questions we had. A day or two later, Daniel Boone School District sends their first official response. They felt harassed by our repeated attempts to contact them and stated that the tone in an email I sent left them feeling frightened. No such email exists. We were told by our superintendent Cooper that Chris Becker, principal at AIC, would be our point of contact and neither of us were permitted to contact any teachers or any staff. We know Chris Becker has personally interfered with us getting any information from anyone at AIC. We know Chris Becker won't speak with us, although he is our point of contact per the old superintendent. We know Chris Becker cleaned out Roman's desk. We and I believe the investigating sergeant co. know that Chris Becker will be lying. I'm gonna repeat that. Chris Becker will be lying if he attempts to repeat the lie that the secretary Jordan told Sergeant Coe. Approximately three to four weeks after the incident, I attempted, I attempted to recover any property, including records from AIC. I immediately did this when I found out that Amity detective De Maria had not interviewed anybody from Roman's school and did not intend to do so. Upon arriving, I attained standard paperwork submitted during enrollment, inoculation records, things like that, and an empty green or purple folder. As I waited outside in the building patiently, Jordan, the secretary of AIC, told Sergeant Coe that she returned the contents of Roman's desk to me and went as far as to give a description of an imaginary white and brown bag that she handed me the contents of his desk. I, I, she did not hand us any contents of the desk. Jordan further told me that Roman's guidance counselor and wife of the detective who interviewed my family, Jessica O'Gorman, told her to tell me that they only document the second time a child walks into the guidance office, per their policy. Therefore, no documentation exists of my son's, even in the guidance office. Daniel Boone School District can provide zero documentation of a nine-year-old in a guidance office the day before he passes. What we really need to know is, what did the two of you talk about? What did his teacher send him there for in the first place? Why has staff lied to police regarding being told that Roman stated he was punched in the stomach while at school? Why did the police conceal this information from us? Why has Chris Becker waited 11 months to finally give an answer as to the whereabouts of Roman's property, when he could have told Michelle and I while we were at AIC twice, or he could have simply called us? Notice the fact that there is zero documentation on the school's part in returning property, just as when they are required to contact a parent when they're in the first place. just as when they are required to contact a parent when a child under the age of 14 is seen by guidance. Remember, he was sent by his teacher to guidance and was crying, and no documentation existed that he ever walked in there. We asked the police to obtain video of Roman going to or in the office that day. We were not getting any straight answers from the police or the school district at this point. We had questions as to what day or possibly days he may have been seen by guidance. Chief Smith scheduled a meeting to answer our, to answer questions Michelle and I had. Jeff Smith of Amity PD forgot about the meeting that he scheduled, putting and rescheduled it, putting the meeting six to seven weeks after the incident. When questioned as to why the police did not ever attempt to view any video, especially when there are numerous discrepancies between what the family and the school are saying, Chief Smith said that he thought it was on a 30-day loop, but would confirm with Daniel Boone School District security. A few days later, it was confirmed by Amity PD that the video was on a 30-day loop and the evidence we were looking for is gone. We have since found out through clarity, through the new superintendent Volker, through clarity, that the video of AIC is in fact on a 60-day loop. And we would have had the opportunity to review the footage when we asked to do so. We could have answered so many questions. Why did the school fail to return belongings from his desk? What was in the desk? Could there have been something he left in his desk related to the investigation? A note perhaps? Could he wrote one of his friends a note? Why no documentation of him being in the guidance counselor? Why did Daniel Boone School District make it impossible to see our son go into the office? How many times did he go in the office? Why didn't the police investigate this and verify it? And I'm sorry to inform Mr. Riker, who was the head of Daniel Boone Security, but today it took six emails from me and three emails from Michelle to the chief of police. The chief eventually dropped the dime and stated that they were only telling us what Jeff Riker had told them. If any person attempts to obstruct a police investigation of this magnitude or hide evidence, this is serious misconduct, especially if that person has trust placed in them by every parent. No parents would trust Jeff Riker. We are aware that a kind teacher who we relied on for support was instructed not to communicate with our family. We have heard her job may have been threatened or she was intentionally led by Becker to believe that I was a threat to her safety. We are not sure which, if either, is true, but the teacher followed this order and ceased communication with us. Having no communication with such a kind and understanding person who has also loved Roman has hurt my wife and I deeply. Since teachers have been made aware that they are not permitted to speak with my family through a verbal order by the predecessors, Superintendent Cooper and Chris Becker, who would greatly appreciate it if you, Mr. Volker, could make it known via email to all staff at AIC that there will be no repercussions from Daniel Boone School District if they wish to speak to us regarding information they think we need to know or if they just want to share one of their memories, memories of Roman with us. As far as banning me from Daniel, Daniel Boone School District property, there is a legal avenue one is required to follow in order to just ask Mr. Subers, he knows. If you deem me to be a threat to anyone's safety, gather what evidence you have, retain a copy of the police report and go to a district tourist, district court and file a complaint. If the judge agrees, you have a legal document prohibiting me from being on schools. What you cannot do is defame, invade our privacy, email staff with a surveillance photo of me while attending a guidance appointment for my son at the middle school, give all three of our vehicle descriptions to staff, all the while designating on the same email a room as a safe room teachers can utilize in the event that they feel unsafe. That happened. An email was sent out with my, my photo on it, our vehicle descriptions and the location of a safe room. And this was for my son's school at the middle school. You cannot conduct a background search, find out that they are a former detective and a SWAT team member and utilize that information to push your narrative and keep us at arms length. This is all done because no evidence exists. Nobody needs to be in fear of their safety because I am not a threat to their safety, nor have I made any threats. These people are only threatened by our questions. Therefore, I will no longer abide by the predecessors, Superintendent Cooper's dictating prohibiting me from school property. I will no longer ask permission to attend my son's parent-teacher conference, lacrosse games, wrestling matches or any other related activity. I've been instructed to contact someone. I've never been told who to contact if I needed to attend a school function under Dr. Cooper. I then went to Amity PD and told them that my son Colin had a game at the high school and I wanted to attend. Nobody knew what to do. I was holding contact to state police. Rather than place any embarrassment on a 13-year-old boy with their dad possibly getting arrested for going to his lacrosse game, I just didn't go. This shows just how little forethought the chief of police and former superintendent Cooper put into their decision-making. I will no longer ask permission to participate in my son's education. What I will not do is show up at Amity Intermediate Center and give the school or police any credibility to their lies. Lastly, we have repeatedly been defamed and unjustifiably portrayed to others as a threat by school officials and staff. We have been lied to by, by both school staff and police. Numerous invasions of our privacy occurred throughout, including within minutes of this tragedy. If you only knew what we knew, it would be more than enough to make every parent lose their faith in everybody that's in charge. There is so much more that we cannot share right now regarding people's actions that would shock everyone's conscience. Michelle and I are still willing to talk and listen as we have always been. However, we are approaching a point in time when enough is enough. When this house of cards comes falling down, and it will, and if your card remains, if your card remains, we will continue to pursue any and all legal action possible. We are both asking that anyone who thinks they have pertinent information for us or may think they are involved in anything that may constitute defamation or an invasion of privacy, please contact us before we can no longer listen. I will provide the board with Michelle's email address, conclusion of this, because I understand that people probably don't want to speak with me. I believe Mr. Volker to be the change this district needs. Things change from the top down as everybody knows. Mr. Volker stopped by our house not too long ago and offered the first real conversation with a representative from the school district in 11 months after our repeated attempts to contact people from the school. They defamed us and they kept us at arms length. And that man was the first one to come out unannounced, no phone call, came strolling up my driveway. And I said, this guy's got to settle on him. And we had a good conversation. And you know what? He did that while our point of contact hid from us. It hid from us for 11 months. He steps into a new job and he does the right thing like that. I believe it's time to be a leader and know that people do the right thing so that this never happens again to another family. My expectations moving forward are that my family is treated with dignity. We live every day in reality. To lie and say that you returned our deceased son's belongings to us when you did not is not only the wrong action, but a very hurtful one. We demand that Roman be given the dignity and worth as a person from you all, although he was much more than just that to us. There shall be no further narratives written by others regarding my family, inclusive of school staff and the school board. A narrative is a spoken or written account connected with a story. Neither Roman's life nor my family is a story you can add to or take away from. Thank you for your time. And Mr. Volker, thank you.
Thank you. As everyone can probably tell, you know, for obvious reasons, we didn't hold Mr. Young to the three-minute time limit. I am going to hold everybody else to it, so I'm just letting you know that.
If it was Jimmy?
But I appreciate everyone's patience and thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else have any?
Can I just interject as well?
Sure. Give, give him one minute, but you can, you can come up if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I would make it extremely short. I wanted to say that obviously Mr. Young and I have had a number of conversations so far and I'm committed to making sure that all of these questions he has are all answered. That being said, I, I also would like to stand by the fact that we don't see eye to eye on some of the staff members' actions. So, I, I do believe while we're talking about not publicly defaming anybody, I think it's worth noting that I do believe the people that you mentioned in his speech are good. People trying to do the right thing, that it is not always easy in difficult situations. So, that being said, I'm sorry.
Mr. Volker, five minutes. Real quick. And I'm not saying that they're bad people. I'm just saying that they're fearful people. That's what it is. It's fear in everybody that's making people do this. I don't believe there to be bad people.
I don't disagree. I do think that there's a fair amount of fear, whether you think it's warranted or not. Obviously, I wanted to build that bridge with you, so that is not a fear that I personally have. But, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, make your way, man.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Volker for all his support to our family and his willingness to utilize the communication between us and school. His actions solely taken by Mr. Volker and should have been the actions shown by former superintendent Dr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper's failure to do so put us in an unbearable, excruciating, unneeded emotional stress on our family. We are hopeful that this step in the school system will crack camp for ourselves and our communities whole. My loving, kind and precious son, Roman, loved his teachers in his school and the anguish of losing him is compounded with the way some of the school and district employees have tried to erase his memory. I'm simply a mother trying to find out what took place during my son's final days in school. A completely reasonable request that I feel I have the right to now. I'm a very pride person and I would have never chosen to go somewhere as much as what my family has endured. The actions of several school employees have taken that choice out of my hands and forced me to lay bare the details of my family's experience in order to clear up misinformation provided by the school system. I initially had so much trust and faith in the school and it was always open communication. Unfortunately, I have never shown that I can rely on the school for support. I'll be addressing the names of the people who have made the choice to fade my son's memory and use my husband as a pawn to keep us at arms length. Less than 24 hours after Roman's passing, my niece asked my request contacting the AIC to reach out to Principal Becker and Roman's teachers. My intention was to let them know how to contact us because at the time I felt they would try to speak to us by phone or stop by our house when we weren't there. I truly felt that this school would be there to support my family. My niece asked for contact information so we could get in touch and whether we were asleep. Roman's guidance counselor, Jessica O'Rourke, told her she wasn't comfortable talking to me and would not give us her phone number. Response left my niece physically shaken. Jessica O'Rourke never reached out to us and went as far as to refuse to speak to us when we didn't reach out to her later. Jessica O'Rourke met with Roman one day after he died prior to his passing. I think it's reasonable to request to reach out to a person so that your son shortly before it passed. The contents of Roman's desk were thrown away. I found a blank copy of our items in the trash. I still find items around my house that had a stain or a writing on it and they're not scratch or paper, but they're items that I treasure. Roman and I went back to school shopping and picked out folders, notebooks and other items. I saw these items in his desk on back to school night. I helped him study for his first spelling test and I saw that our practice sheet in his desk, its related thing worked all together before it passed. All of these items were thrown out. Principal Becker never called us to tell them that items could be picked up. He never sent an email saying the item's in the office. We lived less than two miles from the school. They couldn't have been left to my mailbox. Instead, they were thrown away. Brett Cooper and Chris Becker should have called us and asked us if one of Roman's players could clean out his desk. That would have helped show support, helping to show up, support in a small step that are really promises. Instead, they continued to not communicate. They exposed the contents of Roman's desk and at least knew there were things in his desk that Principal Becker did not want us to see. Mr. Becker and Mr. Riker had a resident request in school, narrated that David's engaged with the staff in the schools, yet he never spoke to us nor ever presented a court order clarifications on family rights. This, of course, didn't stay in school. Several parents of Roman's classmates that we had met before said they were glad they reached out to us despite hearing that David was a violent person and a possible threat. We're aware many families are tedious, you know, and the way we're being treated. I'm so sorry that any other family hurts to be subjected to this treatment by the people you trust your children to. I fully understand why some families choose to pull their kids out of the district, move away or just step back from pursuing justice. It's exhausting and frustrating. We lost our sons. We've already suffered the greatest loss possible. We will not stop working to ensure accountability, the clearing of my husband's name and most of all, justice for Roman. I'm simply a mother trying to find out what took place during my son's final days in school. It's a completely reasonable request and I have the right to know it. And a final statement I'd like to direct to the staff members at AIC who are stating that they are in fear of this situation because of the fact that they're about to date from Mr. Becker and Mr. Riker. Please remember that the day we went to school and the police were called on us, Mr. Becker, who was our designated point of contact, would not come out and talk to us. He sat out Mr. Denunzio's mouth. So, Mr. Becker felt fear to say that he was not at all concerned about Mr. Denunzio's safety. You are being told this information in order to keep a narrative concocted by Mr. Becker, Mr. Riker and Mr. Cooper going. You cannot fully trust that they will continue to support you if you are, they already showed as this their true picture of their character. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question is, do I have a follow-up? I really don't know if I have anything additional to add beyond what was already stated. I, one more time, do not believe our, our staff. They're, they're good people trying to do right now. And I'll, I'll work with the Young family to make sure that every single question that they have is answered. But I, I also don't want to continue a narrative of people aren't trustworthy when I do believe that they are.
Anyone else?
A couple of things that I, I want to share that Mr. Volker mentioned. I think it's really important that conversations are had and the sun shouldn't go down, especially if you're upset or angry. It's, it's, it's actually very humanable to make peace with your brother first, even if you're making an offering to God. So, making peace and communicating, I think, is the biggest takeaway for this evening. And I also think, you know, God has a very special place in His heart for people who mourn. And He will give you peace. I truly believe that. And I do believe that God is God of righteousness and justice and justice will be had. It looks on God's side, man's side. He'll make sure that that happens. And I want you guys to know, rest assured, that will happen. And I do think that the board just allowing the Young family to share, thank you. That is all publicly, that is, that is not to give away anything. One side is right, the other is communication and transparency and hearing your silent story. I know there's people in the evening, I, I can attest to it and say, oh no, there's something taboo happening. And I'm like, yes, it's yes. What is the truth? Because if you have one part of saying one thing, somebody else saying another thing, what is, what is the truth? And why is everything so taboo? I don't know the story. Do I want to know the details? It's not my, my business. However, I do believe everyone deserves grace, everyone deserves forgiveness, even if they made a decision that was not right. I mean, there was an assumption. I do believe there's crying, hurting people who thought they were doing the right thing, but perhaps they know of concern themselves. And then, you know, there's forgiveness, there's grace for even those. There's grace for even the board members. There is grace for days and Jesus will forgive you just like He forgives me. And that might be one shared out with you guys. I do think it's a great time to have a clean slate and just bring the transparency. Whether or not one side is right or the other is just the transparency. So, I just want to share that.
Hey, I apologize. I stole your slide.
Tom Flavich, thank you for the wonderful reflection. Obviously, I could be up patting my thoughts and prayers. I, I've never had the privilege of actually speaking with Shane, so I, you know, some of the things that he said, I just want to clarify. I'm generally pretty calm. When somebody starts to question my integrity or the integrity of my father-in-law, I have to say something. I've lived in Amity Township for nine years. My father-in-law's lived in Township for 20 years. He's the supervisor. I'm on the planning commission. Our interest lives in the best interest Our interest lies in the best interest for Amity Township. It shows in everything that we've been involved with. We run the Harvest Festival. I mean, we are really actively involved in the community. So, questioning our integrity and something here going on is just, I don't think it's fair. I've never spoken to Shane, he doesn't know me. I want to get that on record. In regards to the statement about the waiving rec fees, that's inaccurate as well. The rec fees, what was given was that rather than paying the rec fee in cash, the requirement is that the recreational facilities have to exceed the amount of the rec fee that would have been due to Township. So, for development, north of $1 million worth of recreational facilities have to be built for the development. So, nothing was waived. It was just the ability for us to focus those rec fees on property, building a community center, clubhouse, pools, all that stuff. As far as the EDU statement that he made, also inaccurate. There was 280 EDUs that were purchased in 2003. That's how long my parents had owned this property. Those EDUs were kept, been owned by my parents since 2003. So, his statement about millions of dollars, I'm not sure where that came from. And then, the last thing is, in regards to development, the age-restricted development, the benefits of that is that there's no burden on the school district. It's additional tax revenue and no kids going into the school district. So, I understand kids going into the school district are absolutely important. If you don't have kids, you won't have a school district. But the benefit of the age-restricted side is that you're not going to have the burden of kids going into the school, and you're going to have the additional tax revenue. So, I just want to clarify a couple of things. And once again, I respect Shane. I've never had the privilege of speaking with him. I have nothing negative to say about Shane, but I just wanted to clarify where I stand. And, you know, obviously, bringing up the father-in-law is kind of a low blow, so I don't think it's fair to attack someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Shane, I think it would be better to have a camera. I want to bring up the point of the thanks for the braving and the sunshine. I'm familiar with it. Did anyone on this board give you or Mr. Strobel the ability to negotiate a number of 80% at this meeting? That is a huge problem. Nobody can do about this. And then, they went and negotiated the 80% tax forgiveness. They did not have permission to do it. I don't know why any meetings about this
Not true.
should be happening in Amity Township. It should be happening at Danville School District in a public forum so we can all hear what is going on. I spent, and I don't have anything against him either, but I spent a lot of time doing research and a lot, gave you guys a lot of information and said, "You guys are going down the wrong road. You guys are going to get stuck with this guarantee." And then, everyone's like, "Oh, he didn't know that." I'm reading your contract, you guys aren't. I'm fully...
Now, that changed from, no, that's not fair.
It is, you guys did not know that that guarantee was in there.
It changed. The first one we read, it wasn't in there.
Not true.
It's been, okay.
That's the original one.
And the other thing is, you need to give us more than three minutes. It needs to be at least five, because you, correct? I'm in there, I'm here going over all, trying to talk, I get interrupted. Now, my whole thought process is going, "Thanks, Mr. Strobel."
Oh, you know what, Shane?
But I'm just saying.
Get out.
Okay? And then, the other thing, with the burden on the school district. Everyone keeps talking about this burden, there's no burden on the school district because there's no kids. But there is a burden. It's $300,000 to $500,000 every year that's being taken away from these kids. It's lost revenue, okay?
There's no lost revenue.
Okay. The second thing is, did anyone think that I was going to be calmly about finding out that this meeting happened, that they negotiated without anyone knowing, that the school board kept it from all the other board members that this went on, and then, Mr. Strobel's asking for a vote next meeting? I mean, come on. That was the shadiest thing that I've ever seen in all the decades that I've been coming to these school board meetings.
That's not what happened, Shane. Not true.
I've seen shadier. I've seen shadier.
I've seen way shadier. Way shadier.
This was totally disrespectful and totally dishonest, what happened at that meeting.
Not true.
I'm going to say it right now. There was no shame.
Then, why did it happen?
I'm saying exactly why it happened. Right in passing, because I just thought that...
Off the mic. Where that term was here for Township, right? And the things that people saying were apparently in direct conflict with Township's. So, I, to do what I was best, put together a small working group, two people from the county, two people from Township, just sit down, have a discussion, instead of having all these crazy ideas going around. In a big, in a big room, where there's a lot of emotion going around, where we could just have a conversation and see if we could come to an understanding of a framework that we can bring back to our respective boards and have a discussion back, and see if there was something that we knew forward. That's all that happened, Shane. So, you don't trust your board members with their opinion?
No, Shane, that's not going to settle off. If you're going to say words...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to listen to what I'm saying.
All right, then, listen to what I'm saying. What I said was that we were going to come back and tell the guys what we thought about, and then, get there. That's what was going to happen to us.
But you meant, how long was this meeting?
How long was it?
Yeah, how long was your meeting?
Twenty minutes.
So, we got Mr. Strobel to tell us two minutes of the 30-minute, 20-minute private meeting that you guys had, that you came from your own board members. You didn't even have the courtesy to say, "Listen, this is what we're going to do. We're going to..."
It's not true. It isn't, and it isn't true.
Do you have any more comments to make to the board before?
I'd like to comment when you're done.
Yep, and then, Mr. Strobel would like to make a comment, and I would like to make a comment too. But, you know, we've, we, I wanted to try a different approach tonight. I think it's a mixed bag, as far as like not having all, all talking at us and no, no feedback. I wanted to like have a little bit more feedback. I think we've gone a little bit further, you know, into the feedback, you know, because it really should be public comment. But, you know, I'm fine with, you know, Mr. Jerrick, Mr. Strobel, you know, kind of trying to explain the situation that as they, as they saw it and as they see it, but...
Look at their faces, Julia. They are not happy either. They should have been told that this meeting was happening.
And...
I'd like to be able to speak then, Julia.
Yeah, I understand. And I did explain to you why I, why I made the decision to let that conversation happen here.
So, you were being...
And I told, and I told you a while ago, and you said, "Don't take, don't take the blame for what other people have done."
You don't think this was any violation of the sunshine law?
No. And that's, when you, when you don't, when you don't violate the sunshine law, it gets a little messy, because, because people find out about things in the front of the public. Would you rather come in here and find out about that meeting and have everybody here be, you know, like, acting like they already knew and the fix was in, so to speak? Would that be, would that make you happier? Because that's not, that's not in, in, that's not in accordance with the sunshine law.
Why aren't these meetings happening in public?
This meeting is happening in public.
I'm talking about that, that's a private meeting. No one knows what was said and what was discussed, other than...
Sure you do. Exactly what was said. Julia, can I have a moment?
Are, are, do you have any, do you have anything else to say before I let Mr. Strobel speak?
I'm just very disappointed in the way you guys are handling this.
Okay. Thank you. Let me, you, go, let Bucky say something real quick, and then, Mr. Strobel.
You and I have talked a million hours. We've talked about this whole thing, and I'm not a big fan of this whole thing. But, at the end of the day, I mean, I'm not speaking out the opposite way, but I'll say, there's a majority of us, we weren't happy that that transpired. But I also know that nothing, nothing that did is going to move this thing one way or the other. Because that's why I'm asking in the next meeting, we want the bullet points. I want to know, and I look here, they look up there, but just like, what was discussed? The bottom line, they go to talk for hours. That's just my opinion. They, they did, they showed, report back to us what was said, and then, we have to make a decision as board. If this was something we want to move ahead with, or if we're not. I'm not. I think the last meeting didn't go real well. We were spoken down to, said that many times. I don't think these two really, I'd like to get into something that happened a few months ago, but I had, I had a private meeting with somebody about an issue that we were just, just trying to sidebar. Like, just having a reasonable conversation, having, going back and forth. That's all, that's all. I mean, nothing I could come back to the board and say.
And I fully understand that, but it went from a horrible meeting to, that was the very last meeting, to, okay, everything's fine now, we're going to settle on an 80%.
Well, these, these two, they...
Okay, okay. That is, Mr. Cockle, if you have a different point to make, go right ahead and do it. But if not, I, I don't want to just have a back-and-forth argument.
I know, and that's why you guys will be quick pushing us through and do it in...
That is not what I meant, and you know that.
No, that's exactly what, that's exactly...
That is, that is...
We have to say, whether the information you give us, the information they give us, and then we have to make a decision.
Yeah, and I guess...
But you receive everything over and over again.
They didn't have enough respect to invite you to that meeting. Is it because you're a woman? Is it because they think they're not smart enough? Why do you think they didn't...
Okay, okay, okay. Time out. I would like...
You're right, you're right. On the 100% ride.
I would like, I would like to hear what Mr. Strobel has been waiting to say for about five minutes.
I'd like to have the opportunity to be able to speak without Shane cutting me off. And I just want to start with, I'm shocked over his behavior in regards to calling me names and attacking me personally. Like, first off, Shane, you, you weren't there, and you don't know how the meeting went down. I participated in the meeting, I didn't dream it up. The information we went there with was no different than any of the other TIP meetings that were, that they had, where people went, and they went there, and they had a conversation. It's no different than over a coffee and a table. Just we figured, Russ figured if we put everybody in the room together, we can get through all the back-and-forth and cut months off of this thing and hopefully be able to come up with something. But in true transparency, Shane, I don't hear you talking about how Union Township was all over this idea, because you know it's a great thing for the community, for your township, for, for being able to bring tax dollars in, the tax dollars they bring in the shopping district that fall behind it, the amount, mountains of money that come after the fact. And that your township stopped it once this township started going towards the TIP, and you were upset with it. I don't hear any of that coming out in terms of true transparency. But it's pretty... Let me finish, let me finish, Sean, I'm not done. I shut up the entire time he talked. Julia, I kept quiet the entire time he talked.
I know.
I kept tired the entire time he talked, and I want him to keep quiet. And then, to attack me, because I went there, because months ago, when we went through this, we started at 20, we found out the liability, and you brought a lot to the table. We and I have had many conversations, and I appreciated your effort. But you weren't the only one making that effort, because a lot of other people have done lots of homework. We just don't spew it the way you're spewing it every meeting and repeating it over and over and over again. We listen to it every single time, and I've always been respectful to you. And for you to be disrespectful to me this evening was inconceivable. I can't believe it, what my ears were hearing tonight. And especially when, we didn't do anything other than sit down and try to find out where the impasses were. We also have, we have a history of this. We all sat in a meeting, we didn't vote on it officially, but there was a, we talked about it as a group, and pretty much, everybody collaborated on the fact that if we could get to 80%, that was our offer back to them. We made that offer a while ago. If we get to 80%, no liability, we'd be interested in doing this TIP. And that's all we did, was represent what was something that was said in many other meetings before that we, as a group, we collaborated on that and just, we agreed to that. We still don't have to do it. Nobody shook hands there. That's not what was happening. We do want to take it to a vote. And the conversation about the meeting is happening tonight in a public forum, the way it's supposed to happen. We couldn't have it prior to this. You couldn't tell everybody else about it, because then it would turn into a larger meeting. It would be a quorum. We just wanted to get past the venusia, so all the arguing goes away, and we could find out what every side wanted. And that's exactly what happened. The Township was there, they agreed to step up. The school district came and said, "Hey, this is where we were before. We don't know where everybody else is at now, but this is where we were before. We were at 80 with no liability." The county was the one that was backing it up, and they actually stepped up and put 70%. And the reason the school district is at, is at 80, is because the school district gets the largest gain out of all the taxes that are brought in versus the Township versus the county. We talked about all the things you brought up, because you weren't the only one thinking of them. Can we get somebody else to assume the liability? Can we get some of the others, the builder, to pick up some of the liability? Can they take some of this on? And it's, all of it was done with Brian Supers there and Mr. Bellin, their lawyer. It's not possible, and then, TIP comes, the way the TIP, the way TIPS are set up. It just won't happen. So, we, after we finished that meeting, which was a great meeting, it was a great band-aid, because there were some things that were done instead, instead in the past that caused rift between the district and the school district, and the Township. And those things are, they're gone now, they were past those things. And tonight is when we were bringing it back to that. The rest of the board know, in a quorum, in front of the public, to be able to do. No hidden agenda, no hidden anything, just a casual conversation to see if we could get all the entities to bring all their disagreements to the board without, without months and months of going back and forth through legality. That's how it happened. And you can call whatever you want, it's just not true. Nobody did anything behind anybody's back.
Okay.
Finished.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right, so, this meeting was messy for a lot of reasons. I apologize to the board and to the public, but they're probably going to be a little bit more messy for a while, because I also would like to have a little bit more of an open dialogue. I think it's better in, in the long term. It's not better in the short term, but, well, I shouldn't say better. It's, 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 makes for longer meetings, which maybe, maybe for some people, that's better, some people, it's worse. But it is, it is a way I wanted to move forward. I still will, if, if somebody brings a question that is too difficult to answer, because no one here knows the answer or involves a little bit more detail than we can pull up at our fingertips, we will still be posting those answers on the superintendent's part of the website, but I didn't note any during this meeting. So, but we will still have that open. I just don't think we'll have as many entries in it per, per meeting as we used to have. And I'll make sure to let anybody know, you know, we'll have to get back to you on that. So, anything else for the good of the cause?
Mr. Volker, just want to say, just refreshing, thanks to you for being... I mean, I, I agree with you, and I think, yeah. Well, it's, it's my pleasure, and I think the community has a fair amount of healing to do, and I think we're all in it for the right reasons, and I believe that we can get there. Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion second.
Second, okay. We are adjourned. Thanks.